And they'll inform the forward programme of all the committees for the next 12 or so months. So it's important to reiterate that this is, what we're going to show you is just about policies, strategies and plans and reports. It's not the entire work programme, so it isn't about projects or programmes of work. So it is, it is about strategies and policies.
Like we had the, this is, you've got a whole lot of stuff you've got to do.
Yeah.
Just, you know, strategic, not strategic, statutory etcetera.
Yep.
These are the things where we've got some room to move. Is that basically so?
Yeah, so we'll show the complete picture of everything that's on the work programme and talk through what's statutorily required, what is strategically aligned, what comes from central government in the region. So we'll outline that picture if you like. So just the, the other thing to note is, is what we're going to show you is the complete picture. We haven't scheduled all the work just yet, so that's something that will happen down the line. So today, just review the draft policy and strategy work programme. It's an opportunity for you guys to identify the scope potentially of some work, whether there is any gaps and the timing of any work. We also will take this work to council, so we will ask you to formally adopt it. That will give us some certainty as an organisation in terms of where to put our resources. And just once again, the focus is on the next 12 months. It's not all the work will be delivered in the next 12 months, some of it will be delivered, but other, others will just actually just be started during the next 12 months. Right. Just one quick slide just to outline that we actually do a lot. So on the list on the left hand side is, is, that's, and that's, that's not the full list. That's just the, the big pieces of work where we've had extensive community consultation. It's just, it's close, just under 20, which is about the maximum, which I think is doable for our community in terms of the level of engagement. It's probably also at the upper end of what as an organisation we're capable of, 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 of working our way through in terms of the resources. They are of a different size and complexity, so spatial plan and a long-term plan are big and they take a long period of time and there's multiple contact points between the community and yourselves. In other instances, it's more operational and it's a little bit faster. But in essence, we do get through a lot of work. The one thing I will point out also is we're increasingly moving towards having a lot more in-depth pre-engagement. So we're working with the community to build strategies and policies. That actually takes a little bit of work. It takes quite a bit of resources. But it is the right way to go because you end up with a product that actually has, has a lot more buy-in, right? Right. It is on the list that you're about to see, but yes, we have been working on it. But in essence, this is just a quick slide just to show you where all the work comes from. There's about six different areas. I guess what's different this time is that, you know, the boxes one and two have really ramped up. There is a lot of work coming from central government and also from the region as well that requires our attention. Normally that's not as amplified as it is at this point in time. And it's important to recognise that all of that work is actually being picked up by the same people inside the organisation, okay? So we don't have additional teams that we build. It is just, you know, Mike is, is doing the three waters, you know, and so on and so forth. So important to recognise, we've gone through the programme. We reckon we have about 17 decent sized policies and strategies coming up in the next 12 plus months. Not all of them would be landed, some of them will only be started. And there's about 40 on the list. Some of them are quite small and can be transacted in a reasonably fast pace. But like I said before, it is slightly larger than normal and a lot of what's driving that is, is just responding to central government reform and what's happening in the region. We did this last time. We break our work into different boxes, so it's clear what, what can be played with and what can't be played with. So obviously, everything that is legislatively required, we just have to get on with. There is potentially scope decisions in that area, but generally the timing and the need to do it is, is set by, by central government. Regional and national work is, is coming through strongly and we'll show you that in a minute. And then there's quite a bit of work to ensure that we deliver on our strategic objectives. So you, you set new outcomes and new priorities as part of the LTP and some of that will require further policy and strategy work and so we've, we've looked our way through that. There's also a range of operational policies that we need to update as well, just to ensure that the business operates efficient, efficiently as well. So for instance, laterals, you made a decision as part of the LTP. We actually need to just update that policy to reflect it. Not a big piece of work. We can get through it real quickly, but it kind of needs to, that needs to be done, right? When we've gone through the work programme, we have kept your vision, outcomes and priorities close to, 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 to the work programme. And so this is something that you've signed off as part of the LTP and we've really sought and worked hard to ensure that the work programme, that we're bringing you alliance to the delivery on those, on, on the direction and, and objectives that you've set for us. And the next couple of slides are literally just going through what are, what are mandatory required, what, what do we have to respond to from central government, what is strategically aligned and what's operational? And we'll, we'll, I'll get Geoff to talk through some of them and I'll talk through others. And we're happy to take questions as, as we go through this as well. So I'll hand over to Geoff at this point in time.
Okay, the, the top three, there's three bylaws sitting out there. Structures in public places, the beautiful verandas bylaw. There you go. It's, it's, again, it's not a biggie, but it's still, we still have to work through it. It is due for a five-year review. And unfortunately, unfortunately, the first, the first review is only five years down the track. So that has triggered this five-year review coming up. We will wrap that up into just a joint public places bylaw review, find one from the trading in public places. So we'll do one, one review of both. Has to be done. So that's about maintain those street verandas and making sure we set some expectations around that. The water services bylaw, also it is due for review. It says 10-year review. Obviously, there's a few things moving in that space, but obviously we can't let it lapse in, in the meantime. So we will have to, we will, we do have to review that in the next, I can't quote the exact time, but in the next 12, pretty much in the next 12 months. I think by August next year, I think it is to be done. So that, and that manages all our, our relationships and responsibilities between us and landowners. So we need to do that, obviously. Collection and transport of trade waste, that's been sitting with us for a while. It's a little bit of, there's a few more questions around that which we need to sort through. But I think we, again, it's not a biggie, but it just has to go through the process. The accountability documents, you all know about them. We have to do them. Pre-election report will come up in a year's time, an annual report, any LTP amendments and obviously report the, the normal reporting. Then we have down the bottom, district plan, that's expected to be notified very soon. And that will trigger a whole range of, of our whole work programme in of itself. So the, that's that, and then we're down the bottom there, we had that way, we put it in there. The Faituwa process is ongoing. It's due to be reported, the implementation plan is due to be reported back to Greater Wellington in September. Council Rush is actively involved in that process and we've been supporting them through that. But it's, it's just another piece of work which is moving along in the background.
So the next section of work is central government priorities and reform. So we've got three reasonably large reform agendas that were at the start of, if you like. So you've got three water reform, heard about that this morning in a little bit more detail. This local government reform, which is still at very early stages and the scale of that is, is not yet known. And then the RMA reform is also kicked off, so we made a submission on that just a week or so ago. So you're reasonably at faith with that. But they're all reasonably big changes and it's important that council, such as Wellington, is involved in, in the debate. And so it will take up a bit of our time. As is often the case, the second year, a second triennium of, of a government is quite, quite heavy with NPS type statements. And they've come through reasonably thick and fast, so these we have to give effect to and respond to as well. So we've got NPS on urban development capacity, housing and urban development, freshwater management. We've got waste legislation coming through as well as indigenous biodiversity. So there's quite a heavy programme of work from central government that we will have to consider in the next 12 months. And there's also regional priorities that we're involved with and that's taking up a committee as well as staff time. So there's the regional growth plan that has largely been transacted, but there is an implementation phase. The regional economic development strategy is underway. Some early thinking has happened in that space, but that'll be coming through later this year, early next. And then of course, there's the regional transport plan, including let's get Wellington moving. So that national space and that regional space is quite, quite busy in this point of time.
Okay, so delivering on our strategy, on our strategic priorities, we've got, we've split this up into several different buckets, just so it's a bit easier to read around the big long list. Let's get Wellington moving, due to be consulted on and, and coming up in this, between, in this next period. So no, no doubt that's, you know, in the long-term integrated infrastructure plan, that's all tied up with that. There's, that's a programme all in itself. Social waste master plan review, implementation that, that's also due to be consulted on. And that will continue to roll through the process. Then underneath that, we've got some things about responding. We're now having agreed the spatial plan. There's a group cluster of projects we've got on there. Social and community facilities review, that's been sitting with us for some time. But now having done the spatial plan, it's an opportunity to relook at our community infrastructure and say, does, does it align with where the future direction and growth of the city sits? That's a, that's a sizable piece of work. And, and alongside on the side, that is a review of our capital spaces, which Bex, who's just sitting behind us, has championed a bit, championed the bit on both those pieces of work. So that, but they are both significant pieces of work. Development contributions policy, we've got that there. We've just done the long-term plan. The last was, the last update, the DC policy is 2015, so we've, we're well overdue to update it and align it with the capital capex programme in the, in the LTP. And sitting inside there, there's some discussion we've been having with resilience team around green building incentives. Currently, we just have remission for commercial buildings, sitting in, mission on DC, sitting inside the, the DC's policy. So there's some discussion around how that fits and whether we should have something which around better building incentives, which probably is better outside the DC's policy. But that will come up in, in those discussions. The central city green network plan, Gerald is working hard on that. And how do we align our design for the central city, for the livability of the central city, now that we're saying that there will be a lot more people living there? And alongside that, our climate change adaptation, so. Yep, yes, we can take questions on the way through.
Clarification, so, sorry, I wasn't looking up there. So Laurie, Iona, Jen. Okay, and then Diane, okay, right, okay, we'll get rid, we'll start over there.
So just on climate adaptation plan, like I understand the government's doing one as well. So where does this fit in terms of timing around that?
Does Liam want to answer that one? Yep.
Yeah. So while you haven't got the district plan per se, while you haven't got the district plan per se in that list, the district plan in many ways, and sitting alongside let's get Wellington moving sideways plan, it's, all of these things are integrated. Yeah.
Early on, there was a quadrant of four areas of work. My view is that I think we need to prioritise. I don't think they should be equal. And I appreciate it's a little bit difficult because there are some things that we have to do, but there are definitely some things in here which are far more important than others.
I suspect we're going to be asked to do that later on. I think what they're doing is just delaying for the moment.
So that is the question to clarify, that we will be able to do some prioritising this time, rather. And also just the monitoring, yeah, we did it sort of differently.
I think we've got, we've got much more to come because we're now getting into questions before they've finished the presentation, so, for some bits.
Okay, and.
Okay, look, let's, so rather than go through questions at this stage, let's nail the whole lot and then you know, then you get the whole picture, right? Okay, let's finish the lot and then we'll come back. And I'll start with Rebecca, Jenny and Diane.
Okay. Yes, they're very good questions. Below that, we have some, there's three there which were loosely grouped around city partnerships and strategies. Economic wellbeing strategy, which has been on the agenda for the last year, but we're now working through that process. And that's due to be, come to the committee in, in October. Workshop next month and, and the paper the following on, so. Māori strategic outcomes group has been working hard on a 10-year Māori strategy. And they will be bringing, planning to, they're working out the process to bring that to, to the right, which committee to bring that to, or if whether it's, so we're just working through that process with them at the moment. So how we create productive partnerships with Manu Fenua and Māori and how we build, you know, a strong Māori community within Wellington. So that's a pretty exciting piece of work. Another piece along the inside there is our international relations. And there was a resolution to, to move from a friendly to a sister city status with Seoul. So we're also, that's in that wider partnership area. Housing, everyone well housed. We're on to update the housing strategy and action plan. And one of the interesting things in this space here is actually we're working with Ngārata to see if we can succumb some support with, from, from them. So hopefully we'll be able to work that through in the near future. So the housing strategy updates with John McDonald and his team. Obviously, city housing is coming back to this, back to committee next month. Put the role of city housing, how we enable it to be a sustainable service. And Tumahana, the approach to homelessness. We're trying, we're looking at refreshing Tumahana alongside, you know, with a very direct relationship and partnership with Manu Fenua. The heritage team has been working on a heritage strategy, a wider heritage strategy. The current heritage strategy is quite old and very RMA focused in what our responsibilities are under the RMA. So this is a wider heritage strategy which talks about, more about how we tell the story of Wellington as well as meet our statutory obligations. So that's been, been processed for some time, but it's a bit more of a holistic approach to heritage. And it responds to some of the previous, this has been discussed at committee several times when we've been here around the, the naming policy and, and, you know, questions like that. So the range, this issue around wider heritage has been discussed previously. Then aligning our work, grants framework review. Having, having passed a few papers through around, you know, the, the LTP framework, the children and young people strategy and hopefully Ahaatini in, in a few weeks' time. It's how we align the grants framework with those priorities. We're due to come back on training events in public places in October. How we managed, manage and activate our public places. And we would, following that, we would align the public places bylaw with that.
Sorry, my mic wasn't on. And that needs to be transacted over the next 12 or so months. So things, I won't go through the entire list, but the lease expires on Toipoinaki, so we need to do further work in that space to look at the options. We've got a resolution to report back on the alcohol management strategy. Like I said before, wastewater laterals needs, needs a tidy up. And there's other work that's on the program that's been put forward as well. So such as Sustainable Food Network Action Plan, the Half-Cost Path Policy.
Piece of beauty.
You'll like the explanation. We can go through that in a minute. But in essence, there is, there is other stuff that's either, you know, coming from resolutions that committee's already moved, or it's being pushed up from the business because it's a requirement to tidy things up. Some of this is quite small to do and quite fast to do. But some of it is necessary to ensure that the businesses can operate efficiently and effectively as well. Go on, Geoff, explain what Half-Cost Path are.
You'll recognize them immediately. We have a couple of policies like this. On the, on the hillsides, you will see those white picket, not white picket fences, or white fences that run up to, provide accessways up to properties. They're normally on road reserve, or quite often on road reserve, but they'll have two or more properties up there. And in the 1940s, or 1940s, the town clerk agreed that we pay the 50% of the maintenance costs on those access paths if they are, if there's two, if there are, if there are more than two properties up those access paths. That's quite, it's quite, it's a difficult piece of work for engineers because we, you have to negotiate with multiple landowners. Most of them have retaining walls. However, there was a person, we, we, there was a person who died a number of years ago on, coming off one of those, and the coroner was, I believe the coroner was critical of the council. So we do have to maintain those. It is one of those pieces of, beautiful piece of history which we have to deal with. So, yep. And our engineering, you know, our engineering business unit would like us to have a relook at that. It's just part of the business of council.
And the point is, I guess, some of, some of these are built on or above retaining walls. And so they're coming up due for renewal. So some of them, you know, are like 60, 70, 80 years old. So that needs to be factored in as well.
Oh, no, that's, yes, no, no, that's, that's just, there's a business request that they want a particular part of the, their policy fixed. So. Yep. Yeah, we crossed that road about eight years ago. So that's, that's, so that's the broad scope. So there's business, so very, some things which are very, just the business of council. Including some things like, you're just saying, like commemorative policy, the scattering of ashes, which is particularly, you know, providing a bit of an issue for our PSR staff. And we tend to deal with that respectfully and both and culturally. So, you know, there's things like that which have been, they're just existing pieces of the business of council which we just need to work through. So most, a lot of that, on that, this list there, most of that list there are things we can work through. Whereas the bigger pieces are, as councillor Panis said, there is some big pieces, a big P, big P pieces of policy which we need to try and work through as well. So there we go. Yeah.
To the questions, you said there's not policies and programs, but things like, say, sludge treatment plants and landfills and that sort of stuff. They're not in your list because somebody, other part of council's doing it. The stuff that Sarah will do in her finance area is not part of yours because that's.
So this, so this is about policies, for the most part, strategies and plans and reports. It's not necessarily about capital projects. So in essence, this, this work will, will feature in all of the four plans, four programs of, of the relevant committees. But there'll be other things on there like, you know, like the landfill and the sewage plant and so on.
Yeah, absolutely. And I've emailed it to everyone as well, so.
Oh, cool. Right, good. Okay. Brilliant. So, okay, so guys, Laurie, Laurie, what we're going to do is we're going to go in the order which I had there. So I actually had, well, we'll go straight down the line now because you were in order there. So Terry, do you have one? Otherwise, otherwise I'll go straight to Rebecca because she did have. Okay, so Rebecca first, then Jill, then Jenny, then Diane.
That was good. I missed it on my quick scan of the slides, but to see the accessibility. But I probably do see it as more than a refresh of the approach. We have had talks, you know, early kind of discussion, I hate to add things to the list, but about an accessibility strategy and action plan now that we have someone working on that area. And, you know, it's sort of, so I guess, you know, it's, but sad to see it in this kind of blue list and other stuff. You know, and probably, you know, we had talked about a timeframe of doing something within this term of council.
That's, that's, if I would take that on board, that would probably just a choice of words there. And we know, we know that work is, is going to happen.
Okay, cool. Jill.
So I'm still trying to understand the context of everything that's happening because I know some of the things that were listed earlier, like the Maori development kind of stuff. That's kind of already happening and it's already got its own team working on it. And so it doesn't necessarily have to impact on other things at this point. So there are a few things like that which are going to happen anyway because they've got people already assigned to it. So I guess it's trying to understand what are the things that need new energy and new people, or, you know, will affect teams that aren't already built in. So sort of, yeah, I can't quite see that, where the trade-offs come.
Is it, is it worth you just sort of highlighting maybe the ones that haven't already got well underway?
Yeah, we can do. And you're quite right, Jill, is that what we're trying to show is actually the work that will occupy committees' time for, for the next 12 or so months.
Committee time, rather than your time.
So I guess what we're, what we're, what we're trying to get through the council resolution later this month is, is an agreed work program. But then there's actually a bit of work that we have to do as offices in terms of working with you around scheduling and programming it and making sure that we put the resources into the right areas. Now, like you say, some of them already have resources and are well on the way to delivery. But there are other bits of work where we currently have, have, have nothing assigned. And we just, we just need to work our way through that. But the first step really is to make sure that you're comfortable with the work program and that you, you, you think it's important. Yeah.
I guess just to follow up to that is, yeah, we do need, definitely need that context around it because the one thing I don't like is when we get like halfway or three quarters through something and then some, you know, we might have a, oh, we'll just ax that. And we've actually spent quite a lot of money and time and that's inefficient in itself. So it's like trying to work out what is the, where are the decisions that are actually going to be beneficial? You know, by potentially taking something out. It would have to be a pretty good reason not to be doing it.
Just a question about the, the Green Network Plan. So this is the Central City Green Network Plan. And I guess I was curious where the Green Network Plan beyond the central city sits. Is that part of our capital spaces? Or is that a different piece of work? Yeah, I just, I just can't, I have a feeling that you did email us and tell us back and now I can't.
I think it can be, yes. So the, the Green Network Plan is more of an action plan about what exactly we're going to do on the ground off the back of a spatial plan that said we need to green the city. Our capital spaces will be more of a strategic document that says, you know, we've got greenfield growth areas in the north. This is what we should do there. We've got suburban infill in the suburban areas. This is what we should be doing here. And then bringing some of that stuff out of the Green Network Plan, this is what we should be doing in the central city. So there is still some more work to do around how we do specific pieces of work in those specific suburbs that are the growth ones.
Diane.
Thanks. A couple of things actually on this slide. The Social and Community Facilities Review. Has there been a recent review of community facilities? No, 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 I'm just asking. I understood there's been a piece of work done, looking at some of our, you're not aware of it?
Not as yet. The most, the last version we really had a serious look at, it was 2011.
Okay.
And that was a couple of.
It might not be the policy. It might just actually be reviewing our facilities. So maybe that's something else. It's an operational thing. And the international relations, do we really want to be putting effort into a sister city relationship at the moment? Given, you know, this was determined pre-COVID.
This, this was determined pre-COVID, but that's not the only reason why, why it was put into hiatus. So sadly, the mayor of Seoul passed away. And so there was another election. And so there's a new mayor that is being elected. And so we've been in contact with him and he's very keen to continue and grow the relationship. At the point in time, there was a paper that went to committee that articulated the benefits and the rationale for, for moving forward with a, with a stronger relationship in this area. It's also, it was discussed with MFA and others, and it was seen as an area where we could develop a stronger relationship and it would be beneficial for the city and New Zealand Inc. I'm happy to circulate that paper again, just to help refresh people's minds in that area.
Been a really good relationship, that one.
Yeah, I don't think there's a lot of policy work that needs to be done there. It's really, it's a matter of, we've sort of said, we're in.
We just need to make that decision.
When are you going to go? We're in too.
So, I mean, that brings me to the whole, this whole piece of work. And being an ex-program manager, I would normally be looking at how can you resource this? It's all very nice having all these things. But how does that equate to the current resourcing within the organization? Because, and how that's, how that is mapping?
Yeah. So, so it's the work program of the organization. So it's not the work program of, of my business unit only. So a lot of these bits of work will actually be delivered by other business units. Going through that list, a lot of it already has people assigned to deliver on it. And some of it's already underway. It's like the Economic Wellbeing Strategy, International Relations and so on and so forth. But there are some new bits of work where we need to work out who and where the work sits. So, you know, the Social and Community Facilities Review, so that's going to be a collaboration between a couple of different business units and the organization, precisely how and when we apply resources. Are those, one of those live conversations that we're still working through. So a lot of this does have people, you know, aligned to, to deliver on. But there are bits and pieces of work that, that we still need to work through. And going back again, once again, to sections two on the, on the slides about national and regional work. That's probably the area that, that we need to make more decisions as an organization in terms of how we resource that. And we're currently working our way through that.
So is it possible, will you come to, to us with a critical path? In terms of what's being developed when across the timeline? Because I, I do think, I feel very uncomfortable with all this on because knowing that you, you know, whether it's your team or it's the organization achieving that, but also achieving stuff in the right order. You know, there'll be some stuff that you want to get done before you move on to something else. Or some things will be concurrent or sequential. And it would be good to get a view that we actually have, are able to deliver. Because if we can't, realistically, we'd be better to know that upfront in terms of scheduling our forward programs and, and managing expectations as well about what realistically can we do in the next 12 months.
Yep, and that's, that's good feedback. And actually, you know, some, some idea from, from councillors in terms of what's a priority would be good to understand as, as well. Some of it has, you know, has logical timeframes associated. So if you look at the Community Facilities Review, obviously, we want to be able to transact that work to be able to inform the next long-term plan, right? And to be able to feed that into estimate management plans and so on and so forth. So some of them have quite logical pathways and timelines, but we can absolutely work on that in a bit more detail. But some sense from the committee and councillors in terms of what is a very high priority and needs to be done earlier would, would be good feedback for us to have.
Do they have any other questions on this side, Sarah?
With all due respect, there's a huge amount here. And I remember last time you kind of filtered out what was going to happen anyway. Like what's been funded through the long-term plan and where the spare capacity was. And I think it made it quite simple for us that you said, basically, we can only do about three extra strategies over and above what we've committed to and the list of what was committed. So I'm, I'm a little bit on the same page as councillor Calvert. My first question was, does this all have to be delivered by the policy team? You've already answered that. Clearly, it couldn't be. But can you please do an exercise for us where you indicate what's already funded and planned to be delivered? You know, for example, the 10-year Maori strategy, we did resource that unit by about $4 million. So I would have been thinking that perhaps that's going to happen? Yeah, that's right. Exactly. So where it's already done, or it's clearly going to be done, can you identify that? And then where it's discretionary? So for my money, the Social and Community Facilities Review is actually probably the one I would be saying, if there's any discretion and it's not already in there, I'd be recommending it. Because we are spending money on community facilities and we're going to have growth in different parts of the city. I want to know that we're putting it where the, in the right places.
Can, can you just give us, on that note, could you just give us a, with the resources you've got at the moment, are you basically saying we can deliver all of that? Or there is, it's more than we can, or we've got space left over? What are you, what are you actually telling us? Because at the moment, it's just shopping lists that we don't actually. Yeah, sorry. Yeah. 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 That's exactly right. Yeah.
So, so the reality is, is we, we think most of it is important to do, right? And, and there are options around when some of it occurs, right? And there are also options around the scale of some of the work. And that's probably an area where we haven't worked as closely with you as we would like. In essence, there are options in terms of whether you have tiotas or tiota karalas or Rolls Royces, right? So some work can, can take eight months and be gold-plated, or it can be actually something that is done at, at a faster rate. So feedback in that area is really, really important as well. But big picture, what, what we've got in front of you is the work program that the organization has put together. And it's largely based on what either needs to happen, what we need to do to respond to central government, or what you have said is strategically important or response to, to the strategic ambitions that you've talked to us about. So we know that this is quite a long list. It is going to be a reasonably big ask of the organization. We're up for that. And I guess the thing that we're, we're largely, the message that we're giving is, is we do need a little bit of room to play in terms of when things get, get delivered. But we want to be really careful about adding more things into the list. That's the main thing that we want to get across the line. If there are additional pieces of work that we are unaware of and you want us to work on over the next 12 months, the reality is, is, is we're pretty much, pretty much maxed out in terms of resources. And then we have to have a conversation about whether we did take something else off the list or we move it out by 12 months, or we scale the project right, you know, the, the work right down. So there is, there is literally very little in that list that we would say that's, that doesn't need doing. Most of it needs doing. Yeah.
Another question.
So hang on, wait, wait, just, Sarah, so just, just a moment.
Can I ask this one?
I'll just finish off the question I was asking first. So it's just the level of where we've got, because if there's no discretion whatsoever, we need to know that. But I'm not believing that there will be none. It's where the discretion is and what you've got in front of us. Where is, where is the discretion for toyotas versus Rolls Royces, you know, et cetera? Yeah, okay.
Does come all to one committee? So just thinking about our workload.
No.
So the, the policy work can be divided, but it's mainly an IONAS committee, isn't it? Or maybe Jill's?
So this is the work program of the organization and it will feed into different committees.
I don't know that Jill's or IONAS, yeah, or possibly occasionally finance and.
Yeah, okay. Right, hang on, let's, let's not have too much chewing and fragging.
I'm just thinking, for example, though, that it's about our ability to actually process all of this and approve it. So if it needs processing and approving, proving through a political process, then that really is going to restrict and realistically, how much we can digest.
I think you could put a ring around that there is going to be a very, very busy time around sort of October-ish.
Yeah.
With, with, you know, between Cycleways, Let's Get Wellington Moving and District Plan, it's going to be a monster.
And, and we're not saying that all of this will be started and delivered within the next 12 months. Plus, what we're saying is, is this is the work that's currently underway and will be delivered. Or it'll be work that's started in the next 12 months and we'll be asking you for some level of decisions in terms. be asking you for some level of decisions in terms of whether it's scope or even some draft material. So not everything is going to get signed off and landed within the next 12 months. You've got to remember that next year is the last year of the triennium, and the convention also, the convention also is that generally, we don't take big decisions to councillors after July, so, you know, political ones. But, you know, that's in your hands.
Baz, just keep going. We're elected for three years, not two years and nine months.
Yeah.
It's short enough, anyway.
Yeah.
Terry, sorry.
Thank you, Baz. My question is around delineation and how effective we can be. Will some of these things be able to be visible within the forward work programme? Or how do we know if some things in slide one or slide two are delayed? Any point with our portfolios, how do we know when work's been delayed? How much discretion do you see the chairs having over the prioritisation of things, depending like, because chairs choose what comes to the committee and stuff like that some of the time?
Yep. So ultimately, you know, if council agrees to the work programme that we've outlined here, then that would fall into the relevant committees, and programming would have to start taking place. So there'd have to be conversations between the chairs and the relevant offices to actually programme out that work for that committee for beyond the three months. So at the moment, you get that window of three months. In essence, this provides you that opportunity to look out further out into the distance. The further out in the distance that you look, obviously, you know, you're not going to get that same level of certainty, but at least you will get a picture in terms of work that is on the work programme for that committee coming up beyond just three months. So hopefully, it'll, you know, it'll provide a bit of clarity and certainty in terms of the work programme for you all.
I guess just while we're transitioning away from portfolios where you might have some early involvement to a now committee structure, it would be cool to have as much transparency as we can when those discussions are having. If something gets dropped or brought forward from like a one person making a strategic decision for their committee versus the whole council, and that would be my, I know that's an ongoing piece of work, but that would be something that I maybe hold a bit of angst around.
Terry, can I just say, one of the things, and it was part of the window report, but it's one of the things that's really, really important, is that we do not have one person making decisions for council. It's council's power is collective, not individual. And that's the challenge is, and I think that's one of the things that he picked up, was councillor A saying this, councillor B saying this, and officers going, you know, ultimately, it's a decision of council to make decisions, not individuals.
And ultimately, also, the forward programme does now go to committees, so it provides that opportunity to regularly touch base with what's happening on the work programme and to have those discussions. So I think it'll work well.
Yeah, and the idea of having the overall programme, and timing does become really important, so I think, give it some thought to what you can deliver when, but obviously, we had through June a very, very large number of things, and it was too much in one go. And I look, I know we were in a transition process between old model, new model, and then we had July as a time off, I guess that was penance in advance. But, you know, that we've got to try, we've got to try and make sure that, to the degree we can smooth, we do. But as I said, I know that we've got one very, very big meaty bunch of things that you've got to come together, because they've got to come together, because that's the way that they look integrated as opposed to disintegrated.
Look, it's really good feedback, and I think just having a quick chat to Geoff is that, for the council meeting, that's actually not too far around the corner, but we can have a go at putting some indicative timeframes, even if it's just based on quarters in terms of when things are coming through, what's already resourced, and what probably needs some work. So that at least then gives you a position to make an informed decision at council. And then, you know, if approved, then you can make those refinements when it turns up in your committee forward programme as well. Yeah?
Right, Sarah, and then Geoff.
So we've got to be absolutely realistic here, in my view. So I see 17 items we need consultation. That means hearings, that means time, and work done to analyse submissions. So I've got a feeling, a way to start on this is to actually work out which committee would deal with which streams of work, have a look at the balance of that, have a look at where the absolute priorities are, and select... Look, honestly, I feel like we could only do a third of that, probably, but it does depend on actually a realistic assessment of what's involved, and where it would be fitted into a committee programme, and then we'll make the priorities based on some of the realities.
Yeah. We can have a look at that, just historically, just, you know, have tracked back many years in terms of what we transact on an annual basis. And it has been creeping up slowly, but in essence, it kind of hangs around the 12 to 15 mark. We had slightly more last year, and it was quite a busy year. We've had the spatial plan and the LTP, so it was a bit more intensive.
This year's a very busy year.
But in essence, we're in Kui in terms of where we normally are. Like I said, we're slightly more busy, but that's largely being driven from the regional work and responding to central government in terms of the reform agenda, and that's generally where more of the work is coming from at this point in time. And the only other thing I would say, and just repeat, is not all of that consultation will happen in the next 12 months. Remember, this is work that, some of it will only just start in the next year. So we might just be coming to you for some of these big decisions around the scope of a project we might not necessarily be consulting. Yeah.
Jenny, then Shaun. Thanks. I guess, kind of coming back to how deliverable this work programme is, would be to say, did we deliver everything on last year's work programme? Because last year's work programme was really ambitious. As far as I'm aware, the only thing that was kind of delayed was the economic strategy, and that's almost done. Is that correct, that we basically delivered?
Yes.
On last year's programme?
Correct.
So that is really impressive, thank you. Let's take that moment to say that's actually, that was a really ambitious programme, and it's fantastic that you've delivered it. So that does give me some more confidence that we can, we have just delivered that, we can deliver this. I think, you know, we were just saying, the reality is that, you know, climate crisis, housing crisis, we have to get on with a lot of these things. They're not going to wait for us. We need to pick the right things. So on that, on that, I guess, is about how, thinking about how you want us to kind of provide feedback, because I can look at a few of things and say, I would like a Toyota Corolla here, here, and here, please. How do you want us to do that? Do you want me to just tell you right now? Okay, well, I think the water services by law. To me, it seems like doing a light touch on that, given that we're in the middle of water reforms, makes a lot of sense. I would kind of be inclined to once over lightly on that.
Can I just pause you for a moment? Would, just to see if we could get, is that generally people go, yeah, that sounds right?
In one hour, but it might be that we take away this list, have a really good think about it, and come back for a prioritisation.
Well, in that case, I'll let Jenny do her Toyota Corolla's first.
Thank you. I think the heritage strategy, I can see some work that I'd really like to do around how we think about heritage and decolonisation, but that's probably not an urgent, you know, I could see that one being pushed out a bit longer.
Obviously done.
Well, that's, so it's, you know, I'm not saying don't do it. Yeah, how do we decol, we need to start thinking about how we decolonise the way we deal with heritage.
I hear everything, but that's a debate.
So, you know, let me just use that as a way of saying, that piece of work is not necessarily going to be as straightforward as you might think.
Know that.
That was, that was a useful little, that was a useful little thing.
That depends entirely on how inclusive you're feeling.
And so that's one I could see possibly, you know, I don't see it as something we need to rush to, it need colonies doing. The significance and engagement policy review, I was like, is there a reason why we really need to go on to?
So for that particular one...
Significance and engagement.
Engagement, I'll have to hear what I say. Council's passed an amendment last time to say it should be reviewed every three years. There is no burning desire on our part to review it.
So we could, so when it comes to council, we could decide that we change our minds about wanting to review it, and we push it out to another year? Awesome, that sounds great to me. The one thing I was thinking about adding, saying I don't really like adding, but I was thinking about the infrastructure strategy, and that actually, that's one of the strategies that happens during the long-term plan process and often doesn't get a lot of attention at the time, because we're in a huge amount of rush. I actually think, from the infrastructure committee point of view, I'd be quite keen in not redoing it, but refreshing it, going back and looking at it, thinking about what we wanted, what our objectives are for the next long-term plan in terms of dealing with the infrastructure strategy. I don't know whether that fits in this set of programmes, or whether it would be a different set of things, but I think, yeah, that's one that I think...
We recognise that the infrastructure and financial strategy was done quite late in the piece, so as part of, we've already started the review of the LTP and starting to make some changes in terms of programming, and so we're looking to bring that forward into the programme by quite a significant margin, not bringing it forward into next year necessarily, but in essence, straight after the election, that would be a focus area.
I guess my thing would be, I think it would be useful to bring it back before the election, because we all learnt quite a lot from that process, and I want to capture that before half of us might get replaced. Or leave. So I, you know, not a big piece of work, but I do think bringing it, bringing that back to the infrastructure committee at some point before, you know, before the end of the term, would make sure that we capture that knowledge, because otherwise, having been a new councillor, you're dropping it in the lap of a whole bunch of new councillors who, you know, we don't want to lose that continuity.
Let me mention the climate change adaptation plan covers earthquakes, so really, it's a natural hazards plan, is that it really? So we're not seeing any of that, though, are we? We can probably park that. The IPCC report made clear that there's been no change in heavy rain events in New Zealand. That's what I just said on Monday, okay? Andy Reisinger from MFE.
I think you might be in a minority on that one, Shaun.
It's written down in the IPCC report! I've been saying this for twenty years.
Shaun, any others?
No, actually, my concern was, I think you've actually addressed it, though, but I'm worried about workload for you guys and your team, and, you know, I know that we, as a council, often create work unexpectedly, but I think in your slide that was up there before, you've plugged in a little gap for that. So I just want to make sure, do we need, I jokingly said, do we need a policy policy on policies? Which basically means that, you know, at a certain level of your capacity, there's a policy that nothing else gets added on without more resource or something like that, I don't know. Just work management.
Yeah, look, and we've already talked a little bit about this, and we're happy to go away and look through the different bits of work that are on this list and actually work through in terms of what's currently resourced and what's currently unallocated and needs to be resourced going through. And we'll bring that back to council, because you'd be surprised, a lot of this is already resourced, not just from my team, but across the business, right? So, you know, people working on the district plan, there's a whole team working on that, right? So we'll go away and do that work. It is a heavy, it is a, it is a good level of work coming our way, but I think it is manageable, just recognising that it is, you know, it's 12-plus months.
I think I saw Laurie, and then Iona, and then Terry.
So I haven't got the list in front of me, but I think just top of mind for me really, I think this council, you know, really focusing on what this council's been advocating for, and so the accessibility plan and the sustainable food plan, we did a lot of work in that in the LTP, and I know there were others there, but similar to what Sarah was saying, that they've got to line up, and if they're strong and we've been working on them, then obviously that would be a priority for us, yeah.
Iona.
Yeah, so I really want to do some prioritisation, and some of that operational stuff, BAU stuff, if we can knock some of it off, or, yeah, and really focus on the reform and the big stuff, that would be helpful. Was there anything in there about travel demand? Because I wasn't, it was a question really left over from there, let's get Wellington moving, one. How mu, what is that actually going to mean? Because, you know, my view is that we should be coming up with some creative solutions to people's car dependency.
Off the top of my head, the work is, there's a whole bunch of soft work, looking at soft measures about how we shift, how we shift people, it's on the less likely Wellington moving programme. It's also looking at kind of more financial tools, like congestion pricing, parking levies, those sorts of things. So it's a two-pronged programme, and that business case will be coming back to us soonish.
And what about soft stuff, like community responses? You've got school sport on a, you know, what do you mean?
All the soft stuff will be done? Yeah, okay, okay. It's in that, so when it comes back to us, you can decide whether it's adequate or not, but...
Okay, 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 but at least it's done, that's done. And earthquakes? Look, sorry, I'm going to keep going on about it. 2027 is looming, we have got still hundreds of buildings which need earthquake strengthening, they're not going to be done. I consider this a shared problem, not just a problem for owners, as I've said. So we're going to get, we're going to get that database that Mike's been working on at the next infrastructure committee meeting, but we were supposed to be looking at a loan scheme as well, so when will that be looked at? And I think we need to be monitored.
Finance is working on it.
Okay, so when is that coming? And we need to, I think the, all of the committee needs to see how many buildings still need to be strengthened, it does need to be reported back. It's a very, very big problem, and I just think we need to be across it.
Yeah, I can chase that down, I can get in contact with, I presume it's Marty that's working on that? Anyway, we'll work it out.
Sarah's team.
Infrastructure bonds, too, although that's, obviously, that's being worked through the...
Next round.
Yes.
Terry.
Yeah, look, for me, my, the priority that I see us as a training need to bring forward is the sitting, city housing planning, particularly with, you know, 7.7 million into social infrastructure for Purniki Promise, and within that, the Te Mahana strategic refresh, that's kind of looking at a really unique Maori partnership budget 2021, put like a huge investment into Papakaiang, a housing that Poredua City Council and Hart City Council are forming partnerships with, because they have strong Maori partnerships in ending homelessness and equitable housing. So I think that is a number one priority, and it also fits in with our 10-year Maori strategy, but it shows that we are putting, putting out, putting in the work before we do lots more talking in that area, and I think that's what the sector needs right now, because we've had Te Mahana out for about, you know, a good number of years, and this also links into, like, at the moment in the community, we've just had, we've had a death in our social housing, we just hailed another service last week for a gentleman who was accessing homelessness services that was killed, and like loneliness and isolation, huge things. But the good news is, we've got an amazing community services team. I know that they're really keen and capable to get on with it, and chatting with Claire Richardson on the Strategic Leadership Group co-governed that with Ewi, and they, you know, it's right time, it's right time, and I just don't want us to drop the ball before we go into an election cycle. It'd be nice to have that covered.
And just from your perspective, I mean, from our perspective, that bit of work, that is a big piece of work, the Te Mahana refresh, saying refresh, you know, it's sort of, it's not quite the right word, because I think it is a substantial bit of work, and particularly if you're working with a variety of different communities and bringing them along and co-owning it, that actually takes time and takes resources to have good conversations. So for us, that is not a small piece of work, that'll actually be a big piece of work that gets started, but might not necessarily be completed by the end of the triennium.
Yeah, definitely wouldn't be something that you'd complete in six months, but I think with the place that Wellington City Council is, and their leadership at the Strategic Leadership Group to End Homelessness, that's the regional body with Manu Fenua and all of our partners, I think. Last I heard, when Claire Richardson was there, it was going really well, and they had a high level of confidence in the council to be able to maybe facilitate that work, but potentially, you know, we could partner with the region on a strategy like that, too.
Yep, cool.
And then the other, sorry, just preliminary to that, is the bringing forward the Green Network Plan and our Climate Change Action Plan, I think are pretty essential, particularly if we're moving into discussions about district plan, like Javel's going to really want to see us moving our feet on those ones. So Green Network and Climate Change Action Plan alongside it, which I know there's loads of work already done there.
Okay, I'm going to stick myself on that before I go back this side again. So just some of the things which you might just say, somebody else is covering that, so because it's not your area, just say it's covered. So anything that's around sort of engagement with communities around place making? So any, anything that's around sort of engagement with communities around place making? Would that be yours or somebody else's?
No, that, they would sit with Liam for the most.
Okay, that's fine, that's cool.
Apart from the community facilities review, that'll be a partnership.
That, that's cool, okay. Just terms of, there's some stuff which is going to be needed to be done in terms of implementing new, new things like parking technology, seeing how what the decisions that we've made are going, all that sort of stuff. Who does that fit with? Is it you or somebody else?
So we, we haven't got those operational type things on, on this list. It doesn't mean they're not going to happen, of course, clearly they are.
It would be you would have, yeah, that's fine, that's cool.
Things like traffic resolutions and all that sort of.
That's, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking of all, of all the, you know, the smart tech that's got to come in and how that, how that plays out, that's kind, that kind of stuff.
Not part of this.
One that might be then, I'll try to, to go lucky to see whether it's yours or not, is waste management planning. Is that something that you guys will be looking at? Look at Laurie there. Or is that, is that?
We would.
Sorry, did you catch it?
That would, that is a, there's a whole lot of issues in that space.
Yes, I know there are.
We put it, you know, including the stuff that's coming through from central government. We haven't put it on there as a, it is a strategic issue, but we haven't actually listed it.
Yeah, look, I mean, I, I know that work's been commissioned and I know that some of us have been interviewed by the people doing that work. You know, where are we going with waste management? So some, that's got to land somewhere. It's going to land with some decisions to be made. It's just whether it goes going through you or not.
It's coming back. That paper's on the Ford, that's on the Ford programme. It'll be in infrastructure in October, I think.
October, okay, that's fine, that's cool.
Mike is taking a lead on that. Yep.
Superb, okay. And there's nothing out of Purniki Promise other than Te Mahana, is there? That's in your space?
Not, not particularly, but that Purniki Promise has been reported back, Purniki Promise has been reported back next month.
Yeah.
We have got on there the wider report back on the alcohol management strategy.
I saw that.
Which takes, you know, the broader view on alcohol related harm and.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, so just, just on that one, that I think will lead to further work down the line. Certainly when we've talked to businesses and sectors, particularly around Quorni Place, they are interested in, in, in a, you know, they, they like what we're currently doing in terms of the Purniki Promise, but they're also looking for a longer term roadmap.
Yep.
And so that is something that's currently not on the list, but it'll fall out of either the alcohol strategy or the, or the economic wellbeing strategy.
Okay, so that may, that may come in.
No, not for next year. It'll be an action to go away.
Okay, that's, that's fine. Yeah, just, just, yeah. There's nothing in your, so there's nothing in your area that'll be in the civic, Tanaka Civic Square library stuff that's all outside you?
Tool project stuff.
Cool, that's fine. And then anything that falls out of the economic strategy, presumed by the time we've done, it's probably just about going to be outside the 12 months. But if there's anything that comes out of that, you will be, that's in your space, I presume?
It'll be, it depends on what it is. So, you know, some of the actions that we're thinking about will be research based. Some of it will be action based and sit with VIDA and some of it will sit with Wellington NZ. So it'll, it'll be a smattering. Yeah.
Okay, cool. Now, and the ones which you've got on there, which I did have a quick interest in, the first one was the housing one. I'm interested in the doing stuff. I think we've done lots of stra- lot of strategies. We've gone round and round circles. It's, it's doing and delivering, that's for me is the important thing. And I think we're on the verge of starting to do some stuff and deliver some stuff.
So, sorry, John's not here.
We can come back to you on it.
Okay.
Yes, they are looking at reviewing the action housing, you know, strategy and action plan. So, so it's been a few years since that's been in place. So.
Well, there's lots of things we're asking for different people for, including government. Yeah, okay. And then just in, just in terms of the, what's on there, there's a few in that blue area I wouldn't have put as particularly high priorities. If you've got to do them, then sure. But if there are other things that were more important, bump them like, you know, I agree with Jenny on the significance and engagement policy. You know, I'm not sure that I'd see that's been particularly important at this stage.
There's.
Commemorative, commemorative policy. I wonder whether with some of these things, we can't lump them into other things? You know, like commemorative policies, can't we put that into something else? I see shaking of heads. It's just, you know, it's just otherwise we end up with all these little policies we didn't, from a, from our point of view, we just about forget exist.
Yes, one of the things which I would love to do is do, like they do in central government, do an omnibus paper and pop through about five of them.
Kind of where I was going. Yeah.
Good idea. The operational policies look boring and small, but they're often those ones that are really important to the humans on the ground and to officers trying to manage the everyday work that we do. So you know that walking paths one, that will be enormous, like in terms of engagement and all of the work that will be required. The commemorative stuff, it's huge. We get every week, we get multiple questions from people about how we do this stuff. So they're not interesting and they don't look important, but in terms of the operation of council, that often.
They make the boat go faster at the operational level.
So, so because what you're saying, that those policies are in need of changing because they're not fit for the moment.
Because they're not efficient. Yeah.
So I saw that you've got some policies down the list.
Sarah.
Yeah, thank you. That, that needs just tweaking, you know, because there are issues arising. I'd just like to respectfully suggest that maybe we can make our, everyone's workload easier by kind of accepting some of that advice. Rather than having to, I don't know, second guess it all the time, you know, I like the idea of an ominous, so we can get a lot done at once.
Yeah.
But, and the other thing I think we need to focus on is a lot of these policies are really relevant to the district plan. So they, and they need to be prioritised so that we actually get a coherent district plan. So the, the Central City Green Network Plan and things like the, dare I say, the Muramah Framework that we've been thinking about for ages. Yeah, it's not in there at the moment, so can we think about that one as well? Like all of those outer green areas that need to be included in the district plan. Yeah, yeah, good, good. It is on there. So those things in my mind have to have a very high priority. This might be the last district plan we ever do if local government reform comes along. So.
No, well, conceivably with government reform, it might well be.
That's right.
Okay, so Sean, Laurie, and then I think we'll wrap up. Oh, Jenny, okay, Laurie, Jenny.
Just a better explanation around the dog policy. I've heard that that is one of the most controversial policies in council. So I must say, I'm definitely going to push that through down the line a bit.
It might get even worse.
We could, I can certainly go back and have, it's, it's come to us from both Public Health and PSR. Requesting us to go back and have another look at that. It doesn't, yes, the community gets actively involved in it. Well, and so, and aligned with that is, so after we actually did the animals bylaw and animals policy last time, we actually recruited an animal liaison officer. So she shows, based on now five years' experience of the animals policy, she is wanting to just do some tweaks, you know, and it's things like, you know, how many beehives should you actually build? There's an awful lot of hobby beekeepers in the city. And it's things like that of, you know, and so it's things which upset the community. And there's probably simple things that we wouldn't, again, it's one of those things which you would want to do a Toyota Corolla and not a Rolls Royce. So that you, but there may be simple change or tweaking.
It feels more like the tyre on the Toyota Corolla rather than Toyota Corolla. Jenny then Jill.
Yeah. I guess I was wondering if there are any more on this list that are a bit like the significance and engagement policy? Because when I said to you, what about the significance and engagement policy, you both said, well, there, nobody really wants to do that. It's just that we've got an old council decision that says we have to. Like, is there anything? Where, where we're getting real pressure from the business and staff are saying this is making our job harder, then that needs to be a priority. But I guess my question is, are there any more on there that kind of feel like that significance and engagement policy? Where there's a council decision on the books, but actually what now we look at it and, you know, prioritise it against everything else, it might not. It might not seem like something we really need to do.
Thank you. The significance and engagement policy is one of those ones that can speed up all of the other work. So, you know, for, for officers to be clear on, you know, what is it? It can enable us to do a Toyota Corolla.
Um, yeah, yeah.
If there's, if there's more stuff on that that's essentially low hanging fruit, let's hear about it so that we can change our minds if we want to.
More from the, it'd be slightly harder decision. So that one might be an easy one, but it'll be like the animals policy where you, we're actually saying no, that means that someone who's operating that space doesn't have effective tools necessarily to do their job.
And then I think what I just said to Jill was the, the naming policy. Because you were talking about the dog policy being one that, that we need to, it's been in action for a little while and we want to go back and touch it up. And I think we've been having this conversation at regs quite a bit, that we've been using the naming policy now for a little while. And there are a few ways in which it feels like it's not working for us. Do you want to jump in Jill? Because.
Yeah, we actually talked about it last trainee because even within sort of a wee while of using it, we could see that there were a few bits that were getting us tangled up. And there is a bit of pushback that's come from the community and actually a number of communities around the naming themes and how they work going forward. And so we need to probably have a bit of a look at that. Because just because we've used names in a theme up until a certain period of time, doesn't mean we have to keep doing that. And I think we, unfortunately, we got that slightly wrong, especially when we're looking at 8% of our street names that's Aotearoa Maori. We didn't intend to necessarily keep using.
Yeah, so we had this strange situation today, we were, in regs this week, we were being asked to name a private right of way in Kandala. The, the homeowners in Kandala came to us and said, we want a Tareva Maori name. And the naming policy says, no, we're still using the theme.
Yep.
And so it's just, there's a couple of things like that where we just didn't quite get it right. And, and a quick, yeah.
And even how, even some of the little bits around how we work with Maori around the names when it happens. So it's sort of got a little bit tangled up at times. And I think actually those tweaks are probably Toyota Corolla tweaks. Because actually the policy overall is excellent and it has actually made it a lot easier. But it's just those little bits we start going in practice, we've got ourselves tangled in a couple of things.
Could you, could you give some thought? Because there are some, if there are a few Toyota Corollas or tyres of Toyota Corollas around, that we don't have to then go out and consult on something that's, you know, it's like going, oh, you know, we don't, we don't want to make, because we also look really pretty stupid if we could say, you know, we're going to change three sentences in a policy and we go out to consult on it. That's not a great use of anybody's time.
And actually, in that situation, we can actually use feedback that's come back through the process and say, look, you know, we've actually, there's evident, there's evidence for how it's gone wrong and, and it sort of seems quite clear as to where it needs to go from there.
I mean, I'm, I'm just conscious that we have some really, really big decisions you made. A lot of them are in this lot. But there are, but there are other big ones too, that, they're, they're the places we've got to focus our energies and the public's energies on rather than beginning diverted by little stuff. Yeah. I hope that's useful to you. Thank you very much. And if, so if you can give some, if you can give some thought to that feedback and also to roughly the timing that things might happen, when they happen, that sort of thing.